Your Honor, I move we direct staff to pursue negotiations consistent with the discussion that we had in closed session.
That's good.
This one moved in second. Thank you, Rep. Pro Tem Kathleen.
McCambo.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
So now, do we need a...
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Okay. I move that we adjourn this special meeting.
That's good.
Move in second Kathleen.
McCambo.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
You guys have gotta be the best counsel on the planet.
Thank you.
You guys are out.
Thank you.
Okay. What do you want?
Oh. Should I get that back to you?
No, it's here. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Here Kathleen wants these. We're going to have some mayor's awards. Do you want to take these down Kathleen? I'll just bring them down. Go ahead and take them down. We have some mayor's awards and we have public hearing number two. It's consideration of a sale of property locally known as 1336 Garnet Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions continued from June 19th, 2017, City Council meeting. Mr. Tisland.
Just getting a vacant property. We did have interest from neighbors to the north and south. Did check. We are able to sell it to both neighbors. Checked with the courthouse as far as going through the process too. Sounded like everything was fine there. I was just confirming but talked to our attorney and we can sell it to both neighbors there. So at this point, neighbor to the north had desired 15 feet and the neighbor to the south desired the remaining. So that's how we're moving forward unless someone else comes forward to offer something else, I guess. But we can sell it to both neighbors.
Did you find out if we could take that action without offering it as for sell, public hearing or does...
If we get the current market, fair market value, we can. If we're selling for less then we'd have to go through a bidding process, it sounds like.
All right. So if someone shows up like last time for making a $600 bid then...
Tim, I'm trying to remember all of Patrick's email. Tim had asked about whether we'd be able to sell the property to the neighbors without going through the bid process if someone else showed up similar to the email Patrick responded to today.
The one with the lot split?
Yeah, as far as setting a policy on selling to neighbors versus...
Listening to what Patrick had to say on that or reading what he had to say on that, the concern, if the more restrictions that you put like that on that lot, you're needing to now change your price structure and how you think about your pricing on it.
Yeah.
And think more about a value than needing to be at a, at the least at what is it assessed at.
Yeah, I understand that now. That makes sense.
Because you've limited the number of people who can do that to such an extent that...
But not...
Not that you can't.
That won't always be the case.
What's that?
That won't always be the case. You know, if we have some sort of property, we mail out to the adjoining lots and they're like, "No, I don't want that one." Then it goes on. I don't know. I just... I don't know how many people would, I guess, go for it than if it was market rate.
Lot fewer.
Yeah. And then so then what do we do? Do we start the auction at market rate? How does that work?
You'd probably, if you were gonna have a policy like that, you wouldn't, you wouldn't bring it forward, I wouldn't think unless you are, typically now, if you have someone who offers on a piece of property, you'd bring it forward to go through the process and see if anyone else brings forward a higher offer. You would probably in that scenario now not bring it forward until you have someone who's offering that kind of figure.
So then we end up hanging on...
Which would be a hard sell.
Then we end up hanging on to these properties and having to take care of them.
Given the scenario that you're trying to avoid, this might not be the, reading through what I saw from what he's saying, it's not probably the best avenue to try to accomplish that.
It's clearly gonna cause way more problems than...
You're gonna have other limitations based off of it.
So unfortunately.
Well, we're just gonna have to let it go and see what happens.
See what happens.
You guys good?
Yeah, we need to have a common sense discussion on it.
Yeah, you're right. But jacking the price up to market rate is not a viable solution.
That's not gonna get it done. Are we ready to move?
The only thing I could, we have the conditions that you have to pay by the following day and you have to complete a home within 180 days. Maybe it's, you have to apply for and be approved for a building permit within 30 or 60 days so that it doesn't lead on for six months. Maybe it's just a two-month period then. If they don't apply for a building permit in two months, then it could come back, which would be for anyone. So that might be a way to...
That's groovy.
Make it so it's not so prolonged if someone else does buy it and doesn't do anything with it.
Right. Which might be helpful.
Yeah.
Mm-huh.
So we could look at that for, as a conditions.
That would be, that would be nice to... You guys groovy?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Number three, consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Law Enforcement Center.
All right.
It's been locked.
Yeah. I was hoping you would share my excitement because I really had a great time last Monday and Tuesday down at the architect and so we got into some of the details. But if you don't mind, I'm gonna go over here by Eric so we can use the overhead projector and it's kinda, I'm not going to go into every little detail. And Perry Hines from Carle Nelson, who's been extremely helpful for me on this project, will be here at the council meeting to go into any details that you might, or questions you might need answered from that perspective.
Great.
But I'm just gonna kinda go through some basic plans and where we're at on that, okay?
Outstanding.
Boy, we have been through some bigs, my friends. Law Enforcement Center. All right.
Okay. Well, to start with real quick, this is the existing drive-up. This would be the drive-up here and the lanes are over here, the teller lanes. So everything you see in this diagram that's X-ed out here or crossed out will all be part of the demolition and these will be infilled with asphalt. So as you go through this, you can, if you've been down there, you know where all these islands are. So those are gonna go and we're gonna get that kinda as flat as we can and we're gonna propose that we have an entrance here and then the exit will be over here. Now, keep in mind, as we try to keep this project within budget, for now, this parking lot's gonna get done and we'll see where we end up with our budget, whether we can build walls and a roof over this structure or not. So, I mean, we're just gonna have to see where we come in because it's a definite obligation to be in budget.
Main street's at the bottom down here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Main street's here and then Valley Street's over here.
And as chief talks about this, the original project looked to have this be a covered and enclosed.
Right.
And as we got cost estimates come back, started working on what that's gonna, what the costs are gonna be to do the whole project, the different pieces. We had some expansion of areas that were renovated inside as one thing that changed some of the cost components and not having anyone to split those costs with.
Right.
But, and then I don't know what else came into it. I know there were a couple of other things that came in that changed some of the cost components too. But in order to stay in that dollar amount, the, one of the biggest ticket items that we ended up looking as having to take out is having that enclosed covered parking.
We can't even do covered?
But what, I think what you're, what we're doing on this project is there are one or two different alternates that are being bid out to...
Yeah, and we had decided not to put this in as an alternate because if we put it in as an alternate, we have to have it designed and have the architect fee. So I think we're gonna wait and see how the project turns out and see where we come in after the bids are submitted and then what we could do then is have it designed and have it as an, and as an alternate at that point.
As an addendum on the backside.
But with that said, where the, this is where the roof, the current roof comes out. So we're gonna be able to fit about 10 spaces underneath this roof. So, and what that'll do for us is like we had discussed, I mean, most of our winds out of the north and northwest in the wintertime and this direction is north, so we could put 10 squad cars in there and I think for the very most part is keep them free of winter debris, if you will, for lack of a better word, until we can figure out where we're gonna be as far as putting a roof on this. And part of the contingency with the roof, even without the walls, is it was still gonna have to be sprinkled. And so with that said, that's a big cost driver on this structure as well as getting this sprinkled. So as long as you have that in the back of your mind, that's a big cost driver.
How many total squad cars do we have?
Well, we have 14 marked cars. Total, we need about 20 spaces total, or 21, to just take care of the cars that are there every day. But on duty at any one time, we usually have, well, if the SROs in the summer, you'd have about eight and then shift, you need a minimum of six or seven every day to run a shift. So like I said, this would be adequate to keep those cars, you know, fairly clean in the wintertime. It's already got a roof. If you can kinda picture that down there, that roof really can a levers out over that parking lot quite a way.
Right.
And this structure over here, between this structure and these, there's an existing roof here. And so with that said, I mean, as we talk about planning this to be an enclosed structure, those two roofs are really gonna help us in the money we're gonna have to spend. So one thing we are researching right now that might be part of this bid package is what would a louvered type fence, a fencing structure, cost us? If we just build in two doors and had a fencing structure so we could still maintain that safety, security and privacy as we wait for the complete structure. And if we can't do it now, I mean, the bottom line, we just build it in in the future as a capital project and see where the money falls out and see how it becomes a priority to get that done.
But all the designs are moving forward knowing that we, we wanna have that, that parking...
Absolutely. That's our full intention and that, both the architect and Carle are well aware of that. I mean, and we've gone round and around with a way to keep the project within budget and maintain the parking space because that was one of the most important things to me. But right now, it's gotta stay within budget. We have to be within budget and then let's see where we're at after that. And the way the plan is put together and what you're gonna see is the projects within budget, so.
That's the right approach.
Amen, yeah.
Well, then we're just, we're gonna start with the basement and I'll kinda walk you through this. I'll kinda zoom this a little bit, Eric. And I kinda zoomed past it, but everything else that you saw is just gonna be unfinished open space. Like down in here will be open space, over here will be unfinished open space. We can use for storage or whatever we decide to use it for. And I don't know if you can quite read that yet, but basically this will be the men's locker room. And in this check set, we didn't have the lockers drawed into this, but now we have that detail that includes the lockers. And so now over here, you're gonna have the women's locker room, restroom, shower facilities. Over here's a utility room where we'll store garbage, janitorial things, that kinda stuff. Then all this leads out into a fitness room. This will be the fitness room. We already currently have all the equipment. We'll just move the equipment that got donated to the police department from our building to this building to put in there for fitness. So that'll be the main structure of the basement. This is currently a vault, those vaults from first floor, from the basement, first floor, second floor, all line up and they're all poured solid concrete. So as part of this, it's gonna be unused space, but eventually we'd like to add some tactical lockers to this space with some benches because the room's big enough that tac gear takes up a lot of space and it's a place that they could do their debriefing and actually do some walkthroughs. Is there, is there planning to enter a building, after they make up their plan, we do what we call walkthroughs? In other words, we try to mimic the space we're getting ready to enter as best we can and walk through that so our first time's not our first time. And so we'll be able to use some of this space for that without, at this point, really costing us any money at all. Mechanical room, it currently houses the generator and kinda where we're at on the generator now is to move the generator we have at the police department. It'll be outside where I was showing you, in the far corner of that parking lot, is to move that outside and replace the current generator that's in there. The generator's in there, it's an Onan generator and I believe it was 30 or 50 KW and our Caterpillar generator's 150 KW and it's a lot newer. Our generator's probably 25 years newer. Our generator's not gonna run the whole building, but without Descom being in our building, it'll do more than, than what we need it for. And part of the plan, we thought, well, let's keep this generator and we'll bring ours over, but just the switch gear alone for, to run both those generators was like $80,000 to automatically switch that. So that became not an option real quick. But I was not comfortable with the Onan generator that's in there. It runs the emergency lighting in the building and the sump pumps and that's it. And it's an older generator and we're gonna see what it's gonna take to get our generator out of the basement and get it moved over there, which I don't think will be really all that big of a deal, really. So that's kinda the basement. If you have any questions as we go along, feel free to ask because some of you are a little bit...
Does that generator have some value for somebody to purchase from us?
The Onan generator that's in there, what we're hoping, it has enough value that somebody will remove it for free for the cost of the generator, in all seriousness. But because it would cost us, you know, a few thousand dollars to have it removed, so...
No, that's a good idea.
That was our discussion.
At some, at one point, there was discussion, wasn't there, about a firing range down there? Is that...
Yeah, and that's the space, let me slide this over. That would be the space over here along this, this side right here.
All right.
And that's where it was planning on going, but like I said, again, the cost of the firing range was about a half a million dollars.
Gee.
So for a six-stall range, it just, it was out of our price range. It's something we couldn't afford. But I mean, futuristically, as we talk about these capital improvements or projects, I mean, those are all, you know, it's important things. I mean, right now, we qualify four times a year and we pay a minimum of, to every officer, two hours overtime to do that because it's that big hollow and we can't do it on duty. So, I mean, over the course of time, you talk about savings. But, you know, as we discuss that, probably in today's world, just as importantly or more importantly would be to have a discussion about these new 360-degree simulators. Now, I know a lot of you have went through the simulator we had in our basement that was strictly, you know, one-dimensional. Well, they make those now in three-dimensional and they wrap around and it's really critical shoot, don't shoot.
Technology.
And I think that we could start a regional hub with that. I don't think you could ever make enough money to pay for it, but you could offset some of your costs because there would be departments from, you know, within several hundred miles, I think, that would drive to go through those de-escalation scenarios. I mean, in today's world, that's really important. So, you know, that'd maybe be something to think about too. I think our money would be better spent on a tool like that versus a live firing range. I really do.
Just don't have me do it. I did it down in San Antonio a couple of years ago and I caught the hostage.
That's right, you did.
Good job, James. Way to go.
It happens.
You probably went the first or the last.
I wasn't gonna tell on you. So now we'll move up to the first floor just to kinda get you acclimated. This is the current entrance now and this is Jefferson Street again over here and then down here would be Main Street along this end. So that's the lobby that you'll walk into now and, and then once you come through that, you'll actually enter kind of a secured area. From here, there'll be a door there and a door here and that, the reason we moved the door there is so we could open up these restrooms. These will actually be restrooms for the public or somebody that maybe comes in and they're waiting on an interview or waiting to do a report or whatever, they would actually have access to a restroom. This will be the records area, which briefly, if you notice, that's all those windows. There's 15-foot of windows along there. It's very concerning to me from a security perspective with the clerks that are working in here. So the plan we've come up is to build a wall that'll be seven foot tall and there'll be about three feet in between the windows and the wall. And this wall will be ballistic panels. Along up here will be ballistic panels and this will be bulletproof glass right here to protect our civilian employees. But what that'll do is create kind of a shadow box down here and they're gonna build a soffit over that with bright LED lighting and that's where actually the, it's gonna say, you know, City of Burlington, Burlington Police Department will have a kinda, an identifier of our building, if you will, inside that shadow box. I got a little bit of concern with that tinted glass, but they promised me these LED lights will be more than bright enough shining down, so we'll see how that works out. And the reason we went seven foot with the wall, one, ballistic panels are expensive, but two, we still now have eight foot of light, of natural light that can come in and help light this area.
That's good.
So with that said, every wall that you see here on the first floor is gonna go clear to the ceiling and you know how high those ceilings are down there if you've ever been in that building. But with this room with the, the natural light coming in, the new ceiling will be at that deck height, but that'll be the only ceiling at that deck height. Everything else in here will be a standard nine-foot, four-inch ceiling. But the problem we have in our current building is they didn't take the time to build these walls clear up to the deck and it just, the noise in the building just echoes and bounces back and forth, so all these walls will go up to the deck, but the ceiling will be nine foot, four inches. So there'll be an interview room here and an interview room here and that's, we don't have a space right now for somebody that might come to the front counter that's upset about whatever the case may be and we don't really have any place privately we can take them without entering the secured facility. And so we'll have that where the, the person can come in here for some privacy and the officer will enter in this way and close those doors and it'll be a soundproof room and we can provide some, some peace and quiet to those people that, that need it. This'll be another interview room for that exact same purpose. And then once you enter here, here's the, that other vault that lined up, I was telling you, that come up to both floors. And this is gonna be an employee break room. There'll be a sink and just some things, a place for the employees. This vault door, I don't remember now, Jim, you might help me out, but it weighed like 18 or 20 tons.
I was gonna say nine ton.
Yeah, it was, it was heavy enough, they weren't gonna be able to remove it. So we're just gonna frame around that door and you really won't even know that door was ever there to enter this break room. But then there's a room here, some space to clean guns, which we really currently don't have a space for that. But when I was down there and we were talking about the details of the building, they explained to me that this will be a soffit material and underneath that soffit material will be ventilation hoods so that solvent and that cleaning supply, I mean, if you clean a gun now in our building, you'll smell it all afternoon.
You can smell everything in that building.
Yeah, and the weed's really bad, but, so anyway, that'll take care of that. And back here will be our armory where we can store all of our shotguns, AR-15s, all of our ammunition, extra handguns, another mechanical room, janitorial space, a toilet. But as we move through here, there'll be, all of these are existing offices. If you've ever been down there, and those existing offices are gonna stay. I mean, we'll gut those and put new carpet in them, new ceiling tile and paint them, but there's no sense of, of tearing all this down and starting over because those are the exact spaces that we need and these will be all of our patrol commanders that'll occupy these offices. And down here will be a, again, more toilets. Over here will be animal control and parking enforcement, central supply, and this is the entrance that goes off to Main Street. So then in the center here will be evidence storage. It'll be in here, over here will be our briefing room for patrol officers, patrol supply, juvenile holding. And what that is, is just a soft room, a place that we can bring juveniles into. And keep in mind, when I talk about these rooms, none of these rooms are detention. We don't have any ability and we don't want the ability to lock somebody in the room, if you will, so keep that in mind. Then the officer's room where they can do reports, report writing, and there's a separate room here if they would need to get isolated for some reason to dictate a report. Most of that'll happen in here, but as we have some more of these more serious crimes, it takes a, a lot of space to lay out all your information before you start to dictate. They'll have an option to go in here. This is what we're gonna call bag and tag. In other words, the officer brings evidence in off the street, he goes in here, he processes it, he bags it, and these are passed through lockers. And so he'll lock it in a locker and the evidence tech, which is already inside this secure facility, will take it out of there and do it every additional processing that may or may not be done and log it into the evidence system. So that's something that is just gonna be really, really efficient that we've never had before. I mean, currently, they bag and tag downstairs, they put it in a locker, and evidence tech has to scan it, put it in a cart, take it upstairs, scan it into, I mean, this goes on and on, so. And, and again, this big part of this evidence storage will be all massive ventilation, so... And in here, it'll be another real nice advantage that we've never had. What we'll be able to do in here is do evidence conferencing with defense attorneys, prosecuting attorneys, victims. We can come in here and we can actually view video evidence or look at physical evidence or do all those things without this evidence really ever leaving this secure evidence facility, which is really, really important for the chain of custody with evidence.
You guys are gonna be so much more efficient in this bill.
Yeah, it's gonna be, really, it's gonna be unbelievable. And I, looking through the plans, I was getting excited, but for the first time when I went to the architects in Kansas City, they actually had a 3D rendering of what the building was gonna look like. And, and they're gonna get me some snapshots of that that I can share, that is proprietary software, so I couldn't actually get you hooked into that, but that's when it really started to come to light to me, just how nice this is gonna be. So that's just a real quick overview of what the first floor, keep in mind, this is primarily all patrol operations on the first floor. And the second floor will be completely gutted and start from scratch, but this is kinda some of the, this was gonna be a break room and we're gonna use some of this for investigator space for, this is when we were planning on having either sharing it with the county attorney or sharing it with the sheriff's office. And so that was one of our first real cost drivers is we were trying to develop all of this unused space and we just decided, well, we're not gonna develop, we're not gonna do anything with it. But futuristically, you know, I don't know if, if maybe like an adult probation or, I mean, I think there's some other options out there that maybe we could somehow make this space available.
So you don't never see that, you don't never see that option ever changing then in the future?
You know, I don't with the county, at least not currently, but I do, like I said, I think there might be some options with maybe probation parole, maybe some type of Department of Human Services, mental services, or I can think a lot of, there's a lot of people we partner with that maybe someday could have an interest. And that's why we left this unfinished space in this part of the building because we have access, there's an elevator here and stairs here that come up from, from downstairs. So it made the most sense to just leave this space unfinished. And these are current restrooms that exist and any current restrooms in the building, we're just gonna clean those up, but we're really not gonna put a lot of money. There's no need to tear them out and put in brand-new when we can clean them up and make them work, so.
Amen.
And we'll kinda slide over here. And again, this is the vault then from the other two floors that's on, this currently has safe deposit boxes, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna box in this door like we did downstairs. I just think that somebody may be a little more creative than can me. We can come up, we'd really like to turn this space into our police museum. We don't have to renovate the space, maybe put carpet in it, but we got a lot of artifacts from over the years that we've saved and we got some display cases and then this would just be the perfect space for that. And somehow, we can surely incorporate that vault door into that process.
It's pretty cool.
I mean, like a time vault of the police department or kinda, maybe like I said, somebody more creative than me. And also keep in mind that this was a bank building that maybe 50 years from now, you know, would help keep that in mind too, so. But that's, it's an unused space, that's just an idea of what we're gonna do with it that doesn't cost a lot for renovation. This will be the lobby area as you come up from downstairs and again, this will be a secured area. You won't be able to get anywhere once you get up to here without us passing you through. So this is our multi-use room and we talked a lot about this in the development of the police department. This is a room that not only we'll use for like regional training, but just as importantly, this is a space that we can do training for our in-service. I mean, currently, we now try to use the council chambers or a place to get 30 or 40 officers where now we're gonna have space to maybe get 100 or 120 officers in a, in a room that we can, you know, actually give some instruction on some law enforcement matters and bring some, some schools to our community. If we bring a school to town and get other IAGs to participate, one, anybody that we send to the school is free, so. And plus, it's here, we wouldn't have to pay for meals or hotels or those other things. So that's gonna be a great, a great use. And this is just a storage room for the chairs and tables for this room. And we'll go through the outside. This will be the chief's office, that's where all of our administrative files. And I really wanted to keep the current, like we have at our, our building now. I mean, Kristen, she sits here and she sits right in between a major and myself, which is really nice for the transfer of information and saves a lot of steps. And so we're gonna leave that the same. This says administrative captain, well, that, that'll be the major, the other major's office. Then as we move down, you're starting the CID with the CID, command officers. We wanted to try the bullpen approach for all of our investigators. All the new police facilities are doing this approach where all the investigators are in the same room and they're just kinda divided by cubicles, just to keep those lines of communication open. So we're gonna try that. I, I think that everybody else is using it and they're satisfied with it and it's gonna, it's gonna, gonna one save some money on renovation, but more importantly, I think make a better use of the space. And this room here, it says a workroom, well, really what'll be in here is like upstairs copiers, printers, those kinda things. And then we'll just start moving into the interview rooms. So any, any interviews that the detectives are doing or if patrol got full up downstairs and needed to use a room, these rooms will be available to them. This is what we're gonna call a soft interview room, where again, you maybe have a child or you have a victim of a sexual assault, and this room will look more like a living room type setting or a very neutral setting that somebody that's really been traumatized can kinda hopefully try to relax a little bit as they're being interviewed, 'cause that's, that's a no fun process to go through. And there was gonna be a, a window here, a reception type window. We don't have an investigative clerk. I think someday with the call load that we have, I think that's something that'll be worthy of discussion, but it's not in the budget now and we don't have one. So again, we're just turning this into another interview room. When we have these major cases right now, we only have three interview rooms, and it's, it's no good. We got people sitting out in the lobby that need interviewed and they really don't have any business talking to each other, so. This is gonna be nice, really, really nice. Then there'll be some, some public restrooms here that somebody that maybe was being interviewed or whatever would have access to. Along with this, this interview or restroom here is gonna be a secured restroom where the toilet flush button is on the outside, just to make sure if we had somebody we were interviewing that thought they might have some evidence they were trying to destroy or whatever, this, well, they'll use this restroom, they won't be able to do that.
Who's, who's idea was it to come up with that?
Well, actually, in all the, all the new modern facilities, they have this type of restroom, because every now and then, you know, you get people that-
Slicksters.
Yeah, have a little different idea, exactly right. So this will be at a, it says an administrative conference room, but at the same time, you know, if we have overflow, this is really gonna be nice for like, uh, command meetings and, and those kinda things, or if we had a major incident and we wanted to get like the media all into one room for some reason, this would be the perfect place to do it. They're gonna have a major case room that they've never had before that'll be fully multimedia, 'cause they really use GIS and some of these technology functions now that we don't have access to, so that'll be nice. So that's just kind of a, a basic overview of what the new police department's gonna look like. And I know I probably took more time, but it's something that really needed to be explained.
I like that you get the coroner office there, I think.
Yeah, and it had nice windows. You still can't really see the river so much like you can now, but, yeah, that was the architect's idea, actually.
I like it.
Man, I'll tell you what, this is, uh, it's been a long process, it's not done yet, but man, that's great.
Do we know when US Bank is moving?
Uh, they're still set on that date, that August eighth or ninth. And I know that that date is really solid, 'cause they're talking about moving safety deposit boxes, so that, that date's gonna be what it is.
So is it gonna take us a year from now, you think?
You know, I don't think it will. It, it depends on who you talk to. As I talked to the architects, they think eight to nine months. Carl A thinks maybe eight to ten months, so I think you're in that, you know, as an average, nine months, so. You know, if we really get to, to going with demo late August or the first part of September, I mean, I, I think that that June first timeframe would be a reasonable goal. I mean, they, they think it could be sooner than that, but I don't like to put that out there. I wanna have a little cushion in there.
Yeah.
I just know how projects go.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to walk through a day, man.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
It'll be a big day for the whole community.
Invite me.
Oh, absolutely.
Be there.
Thank you.
You guys good? Yeah, oh, yeah, thanks for your support, appreciate it.
Awesome. Okay, uh, number four, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Denmark Street right of way located west of South Main Street. Mr. Tisland.
Wouldn't take much to knock it down.
Second reading, um, you got anything?
Didn't meet with the property owners on this. Um, they had a inquiry, I guess, uh, typically we split it down the middle and they had both, uh, just stopped by my office on Friday, I believe it was. Uh, they wanted the north property owner to have eighteen feet and the southern property owner to have the remaining, so the north property owner, that area in the black box, um, which I think we need, wanna amend it to include that language in the ordinance if that's, uh, okay with council. Uh, they both stopped in and felt that'd be more usable to the neighbor on the north who originally requested the vacation. And then their question originally as well, uh, neighbor to the north had, uh, uh, applied and was going to seek all of the, uh, right of way and had given the price of five hundred dollars. The neighbor to the south, uh, indicated they'd like some of it, and the ordinance, it says five hundred dollars for each purchaser, and they requested whether that could be split, five hundred dollars total split between the two, so I wanted to pass that along and get any input back to them.
Would we have to have that as an amendment either way?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I mean for both.
It'd just be an amendment to exhibit C for both.
Yeah.
And we'd both-
Since we've already proved it once.
Yeah.
So can you, you guys good? Can write that up?
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And number five, uh, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of alley right of way located north of Vettner Street and east of South Plain Street.
No changes here. Again, the neighbor on the east side of the alley, um, expressed an interest at his owner, two thousand six Etna. He owns all the lots adjacent to the alley on the east side. The owner to the west did not have any interest in the alley, um, would retain an easement over it as well.
Sounds good.
You wanna waive that reading?
I'm cool with it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Number six, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending chapter one twenty-six taxi cabs and vehicles for hire of the Burlington Iowa Code of Ordinances and deleting chapter one twenty-seven vehicles for hire drivers in its entirety. Chief?
Just a real quick update on that. I don't know if you have that, friend, but if you look at page six of the new ordinance, the very last paragraph, and what it talks about is a central dispatch center, that, that shouldn't, that paragraph was meant to be deleted or struck. It shouldn't have been in there and it's been struck now, because they're not gonna be required to have a dispatch service.
Sure, I remember that.
Just wanted to make sure I pointed that out, that you knew about that.
You guys have any other questions, or?
Yeah, I asked last week. Um, for, uh, companies like Uber and Lyft. Well, their vehicles have to be, um, alike. Well, they have to look so they can, it can be a black vehicle and a white vehicle and a red vehicle.
Yeah.
They just have to be identified as Uber.
Correct.
Are they going to be independent contractors or are they going to be part of the corporation?
I don't know, you'd have to ask. I don't know. I'm assuming that they're independent contractors to Uber, I would assume. I don't, I doubt that they're employees of Uber.
Well, part, part of the ordinance requires that the, that the corporation identify the officers and, and provide that information to your office, and that's, um, I, I'm, I'm just curious.
I think Uber's gonna be very, Uber, the company is gonna be required to do that with the state. I'm confident of that, 'cause I know they have to show proof of financial responsibility as well. And that's what that addresses, is the actual company, not the drivers.
Okay.
They're independent contractors.
I don't see how they could do it any other way.
I just, I'm-
What's that?
I just looked it up.
What's that?
That they are independent contractors.
Okay.
I just figured we have the-
But it was interesting, I was approached probably four or five different times at Steamboat Day from the younger generation going, where's your Uber at? Where, I mean, it's coming. I mean, that's just what it's all coming to. And I said, well, unfortunately, we don't have it yet, but.
No, don't get me wrong. Two things. One, one is, I, I don't have a problem with app-based programs and, and getting rid of dispatchers and that sort of stuff. I, I, I've got a problem with millionaires telling us how we're going to run our, our local cab services and, and, um, the, 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 if my employees were independent contractors, I would have some huge tax liabilities, and I don't, I'm not sure how this is going to work. Where they're, they're working at the direction of Uber and they're working as, through a dispatch, even though it's an app-based application, they're going to be dispatched by, by this, uh, by this app.
Yeah, they would be self-dispatched. I mean, as they look at the app, the way I understand it, and a fare pops up, they can click on if they wanna take it or if they don't. They don't, they're not required in any way, shape or form to take that fare. That's my understanding.
Yes, that is correct.
That's right.
So they're not dispatched. I don't, I mean, that's how I-
So the app just comes up and says, we've got this.
We got this fare and here's where it is. Do you want it? No, I don't. Okay, do you want it? Yeah, they're not required to take that fare.
So then the guys-
They can work whenever they want.
Yep.
And whoever responds first gets it. It's not like two people can say yes and then it's like erased.
Amazing. I have, just a, just an anecdote, there's a, there, there's a company in town that uses contractors to install, uh, cable for television.
Okay.
And, uh, one of my employees gets a call and says, uh, this is, uh, the, the call come in, it was something like, um, we're outside your crib, to install your, your cable. And there were two gentlemen, they, uh, they, my employee really didn't wanna let him in, but he wanted to have cable. And it's also installing the cable for, for, uh, computers. And these guys were independent contractors. They, they, they worked at the direction of the, or dispatched or got the orders from or whatever, and it, from, uh, from, well, it's from MediaCom, so it was. And, uh, I, I just wondered, I, I, I'm, what, what kind of vetting process these, they're, they're going, uh, going to use. I mean, if anybody could step up and say, I wanna be an Uber driver, and they can, what, I mean, who, who are we gonna have out there?
Yeah, the only, the way I understand that, that portion of it, the way I understand it to work is that's, that's on Uber, and, and it's that these, the exact same state law will require that they meet these standards. So it'll be on Uber to make sure that their drivers meet these standards, and if they don't, the state will have the option to revocate their permit, and that'll be the same way for us, 'cause we no longer are gonna revi, are going to permit the drivers. We can't, we can't do that anymore. But what we can do is, is I have the right to inspect at any time that your drivers are within these qualifications or these guidelines, but they've shifted that liability from, well, at a local level, from the police department back to the cab services. Saying, here's the qualifications, and you just need to make sure your employees meet these qualifications.
Basically, it's, you have to be twenty-one years or older, minimum three years driving experience, car insurance in your name, a social security number, and then you give them permission to do a background check, which checks for DUIs, accidents, reckless driving, criminal history, that kinda thing. That's what I did. So they checked my entire life. And, yeah, and also the car has to be new, you have to own the car. Has to be four doors, at least.
Yeah, insured, certain limits insured.
Does that mean if owned, does that include lease?
That I'm not quite sure about. It says use their own car, so I don't know if that means-
That probably lease is okay then, for sure.
And I'm still trying to figure out the permitting process. Is it the, the cities that Uber has to permit through, or do they get one permit from the state to operate in the state? And I got about four calls into the DOT and six voicemails and, yeah. That's where I'm at on that. I'll keep you posted on those return calls, just to, 'cause I wanna know in my mind if their permitting process, is one permit good for the state, and if it is, or do they actually have to be permitted for Burlington City or Rapids, uh, you know? I don't know. And I don't know if the state knows, because I haven't got a call back yet, but we're gonna find out.
Did these four or five young people that ask you about Uber, you tell them we didn't have that, but they could call Yellow Cab or ABC?
Absolutely, I did. I said, we have two cab companies, A to Z and Yellow. That's exactly what I told them.
Good job.
And they, they needed a ride. That's what they ended up with, but they needed a ride and they were responsible enough to look for one, so it was impressive. It was impressive.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep, thank you.
All right, we're good?
Good.
Number seven, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending section one seventy point five zero Board of Adjustment of Chapter one seventy zoning code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Mr. Tisland?
No changes from the previous reading. This again is, uh, adding to our zoning code to allow special exec, special exceptions through the zoning board adjustment uh, section of our zoning code, uh, where they can grant, uh, approval of certain exceptions to the code based on conditions of the property.
You guys wanna waive that one, or?
What, what is the zoning board? Have they had any say about this, or?
They, they've been very supportive of it. They've been very frustrated, I think, the last couple of years that alls they do is deny variances and approve special use permits for home occupations. They didn't feel they had much role to grant anything, or-
I sympathize.
They've been there, done that.
They've been there, done that. I'm okay with waiving it.
Oh, yeah, I have a feeling.
Good?
Anything?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right. All right, moving forward. Number eight, resolution approving the preliminary plat of Ingram subdivision. Mr. Tisland?
We have the preliminary and final on the agenda here. Now, this is in the county two-mile area just north of the city off Memorial Park Road. Um, they're looking to do a four-lot subdivision. It's going through the county process as well, but they did not have any comments or issues with what they're looking to do. Based on the lot size, uh, ranging from about one point three acres to two acres, with two lots on Memorial Park, uh, Drive, and then a thirty-foot access easement to the back two, uh, lots. Um, there are no public utilities, uh, installed with this, but based on the number of lots, it does have to go through our major subdivision, which, uh, anything over three lots requires a preliminary plat and final plat. They are asking to, uh, waive, uh, the city zoning code requirement that requires all lots to have frontage on a public street for lots two and four, uh, by means of the utility easement. Um, that would serve as a private drag to those, uh, lots, uh, two and four, along with the utility easement. Again, this has, uh, been reviewed by the county, uh, they do not, uh, have any issues or questions on it, but trying to coordinate the process through the city at the same time.
Okay.
Counsel? You guys good?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
Yes and no? Inspector General, you're good? Okay. Number nine, resolution approving the final plat of Ingram subdivisions. Okay, on to the proposed consent agenda. A resolution approving purchase of a two thousand eighteen Elgin Pelican NP for Public Works Street and Sewer Division. Nicholas?
In front of you is a capital improvement item that was, uh, planned out last, uh, during the budget season. Um, it'd be purchased after July first, so it'll be fiscal year eighteen. Um, it's a little over budget or a little over what was the proposed budget was. Um, it was purchased through the, uh, State of Minnesota purchasing, uh, the state bid, so. Any questions?
Didn't we get something cheaper that, uh, that we had some other equipment that was a little bit cheaper and it was pretty much washed and all?
Um, we, we did get the combination truck, which is a little bit cheaper. It's, that's sewer money versus road use, but-
This net cost is cheaper than what was budgeted to, isn't it, with the trade-in?
With the trade-in, no, it's about three thousand more.
I thought the trade-in was, oh, I'm sorry.
Thirty-nine thousand.
Not reading it right.
How old is, how old is ours?
I think it's an oh-nine.
Yeah.
That's what it says here, oh-nine.
So this is a brand-new one?
Correct.
Do you have pictures?
I don't.
I'll just Google it, I guess.
I think, I don't think it looks that much different than our, our previous sweepers. I don't think they've changed too much. It's a, it's a mechanical sweeper instead of a vac sweeper, so it's got the brushes in front rather than-
They've got regular sweepers at Dollar Store for like three ninety-nine, if you really wanted to save the taxpayers' money. I'm good. You guys?
Yeah.
Per hour usage.
Sweep America, guys. All right. We're good?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Uh, next, you have a resolution establishing a no parking zone on the south side of the 1100 block of Arch Street in its entirety.
We had a request come in from a property owner off the 1100 block of Arch Street. As you can see here, the resolution would create no parking on the south side of Arch Street. Arch Street is a dead-end road that serves four properties. We sent out, um, surveys, uh, to the property owners. We received three back that were in favor. Uh, the fourth, I believe, is, uh, not a very frequent user of the property, so. Public Works recommends approval based on, uh, the width of the road and, um, accessibility for snow removal and whatnot.
Sounds good.
Any questions for Nick? Thank you, Nick. Okay. Resolution approving renewal of a three-year lease agreement with the operation of the Iowa store, located in the port of Burlington. Welcome, Senator.
This is just a three-year renewal from the previous three-year renewal, uh, with, uh, the Iowa store and, uh, Ms. Bonnie Baldwin. The only thing that changed from the previous agreement was the dates. Insurance and everything stayed the same after conversating with her attorney, so there's nothing too new about this.
Okay. Questions, counsel?
Nope.
Nope. Good to go, all right. And a resolution approving professional service agreement with H.R. Green for Mr. Fitting's wastewater treatment plant, or our wastewater treatment plant, that Mr. Fitting takes such good.
I think about his mind. Done a lot of work with H.R. Green through the years, um, at the wastewater treatment plant. That, uh, work that we've done has kind of resulted in a familiarity between us and them, our people, their people, uh, they're very familiar with our wastewater treatment facility. Uh, there are times that, uh, questions or issues have arisen that we've, uh, felt free to call them. Sometimes it's while a particular project's scope is being, um, gone through and we're working with them, and we'll bring something that's really outside the scope and ask them about it, and they typically have helped us out. There's also times when we don't have anything actively going on, but we touch base with each other and, uh, we think of them when we have a, an issue that arises. These are issues that typically are, you know, issues that would not be something that would be easily answered by our current, our, our existing engineering department. And so, again, we would contact H.R. Green, and, again, they've been very helpful through the years, but they suggested to us this, uh, agreement, which would set up, uh, a formal understanding, it's a formal agreement, where if we had an issue that arose, uh, it would give us a resource to go to and, uh, provide a means for them to be, um, compensated for any time that they might spend in researching an item and providing us answers to the questions that would be raised. Uh, so we're asking, uh, we're seeking the approval of counsel to allow the, uh, mayor to sign the agreement. I assume the city clerk will assign a contract number to that agreement. It's for a one-year period, uh, maximum of $10,000, meaning that, uh, we could have a, uh, work done for us that might cost us $700, and that would go against that $10,000. We would, uh, process the invoice, uh, assign it to that contract number. And as time goes on, uh, we could use, uh, very little of that $10,000 in the next fiscal year, or we could end up using all of it. But in order to exceed that dollar amount, we'd have to have the agreement amended before we could go beyond that, so.
That's reasonable.
Good. I like it.
Everybody satisfied?
Yep.
Thank you, Don. Good call.
Hey, how's the water going?
Downhill.
We love this guy. I don't know why. I don't know. You guys good?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay. And we have some public hearings out for June, July 17th, consideration of sale of property locally known as 718 Columbia Street, city of Burlington, with conditions. Anything you want to say on that, Mr. Tisland?
Just a home, uh, we acquired, uh, through the abandoned building program. It is in our local historic district on the corner of, uh, Eighth and Columbia. Uh, I've had a couple interested in purchasing it to rehab.
Have they set an offer price or anything like that?
Just the minimum amount at this time. It does have.
Five?
Yeah, quite a bit of, uh, repair work on the inside. There's a lot of water damage and it is in not the, not very good condition.
But it is in the historic?
It is in the historic, which, any exterior changes or updates would have to go through the HPC, but if they're just, they can do anything to the inside, but any exterior changes would have to get approval through the HPC.
Okay. Uh, B is consideration of an ordinance, vacant and selling a portion of Oak Street right-of-way, located east of Bluff Road, Burlington, Iowa. C is consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with John and Doris Champagne for encroachment into city right-of-way adjacent to the property loca, located at 1500 Madison Avenue, Burlington, Iowa. D is consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Harrison Avenue Storm Sewer Improvements. And E is consideration of the plans and specs for the 2017 Flow Metering Project. Discussion items. A. Uh, treasurer's report?
Um, in your packets, May's treasurer's report. For the most part, everything's, we're just going right along. We're gonna be doing our big transfers. The second half transfers in June. So when I look over the balances, I don't see anything that's not, that's, that's outstanding, that's alarming, that we're not, we don't already have planned for, or is a timing issue. So I didn't know if you guys looked through and had any questions.
Are we right, we're gonna be done with all these negative balances at the end of June?
We'll still have some, if you look at the capital projects sheet, some of those will be projects that are in process, so they'll still be carrying a deficit.
I don't mean that, I mean the, the ones.
In terms of the def, the long-term deficit accounts that go with finished projects, uh,
Yeah, golf course is scheduled to be taken care of, Recplex, those, those are June transfers that we haven't made yet, so.
And if you look at our balance right now, we're at 43 million. We did a, a refinancing on a debt issue for 7 million or so.
Yes.
Um, that, so we had that money borrowed in March and sitting there waiting for paint, to pay off the old debt issue in June. And then we borrowed 10 million for capital projects, uh, that were, uh, just getting, we're just getting started on, so we've got a lot of money sitting, uh, for work to be done.
But then in June, it kind of goes back to.
A lot of it will go away in June.
Yes, where, where we were at kind of before, because we made all our debt payments and.
Yeah.
Everybody knows how that works. You know, payday, you're rich, and then five minutes later, you're broke.
We had to keep it for a little bit, so.
Guys have any questions?
Thank you for your work. I really appreciate you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Annette. Number two, Central Avenue Bridge Retaining Wall Engineering Assessment. Mr. Matt?
I gotta take these papers. Couldn't fit it all.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, although it's been a really small.
I used to do that.
Actually.
And Nick doesn't shoot the witness. Shameful. Should've never said that.
I was so embarrassed.
Go ahead, sir.
Am I ready?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so we hired Stanley Consultant, who's also working on Mount Pleasant Street design, to take a look at the Central Street Bridge. Um, as you know, we had kind of a pile of brick, uh, on the Dress Rand site, kind of holding up what, the wing wall that was all bowed out. And there's been some issues over the past. We had them take an assessment on this. Um, what's in front of you is kind of a recommendation of some of the fixes, um, not just immediately, but over the long term. As you can see in the red, as it's, it indicates at the very bottom, things that should be done in, uh, one to two years, two to five years, and then five to 10. Um, I wanted to cover this quick and then bump into, I have a PowerPoint presentation, um, to kind of show you some of the things that they're talking about. But as you notice, the, the, the big thing that they highlight the first couple of years is, uh, a seal between the abutment and the bridge deck, um, that is allowing water to go underneath the structure and cause some erosion to happen. Not only that, but then the freeze-thaw cycle, uh, is the reason why those wing walls, which aren't structural to the bridge, um, cause a little woe in them. But as you notice, $137,000 is recommended in one to two years in fixes, um, for the bridge. I think that the abutmen, the abutment pieces are probably the fairly easy ones to tackle. Um, but, you know, from anywhere from 6,000 to 12,000 dollars. The big one is on that is retaining wall G, which you'll be able to see when I get into my slideshow. So unless there's any questions right on that, I'll jump into the slideshow to kind of show some images on what I'm talking about.
It's switched here. It's switched here.
Press the button, Nick.
Is that how you do that?
Jim broke it.
It is. Mr. Tex.
First he shoots the witness, then he broke this. I don't, this guy.
It's like the last time I'll go to a demonstration.
That's a sign of a confident person.
When I was in that room where everyone else had gone through that thing, and then I did that, I felt so small. I am small. Okay, here we go. So, um, as I was referring to earlier, retaining wall G, um, is up on the northwest corner. So, um, that is that retaining wall that you saw with the brick. It's got a fairly decent woe to it. But these images kind of tr, tell you the stories to the reasons why the bridge is seeing some, some need of repair. As you can see here, these are the, the bridge, and this is probably the better case, where you can actually see the bridge deck versus the abutment. Um, that seal there is pretty much gone and allowing water inside underneath between the abutment and the deck. And so what it does is it gets in behind there and it causes, um, concrete to break. And so that's what you see here. And just as a, the, the, this crack here is on the wing wall, and it's not a structural concern. There is no concerns with the bridge. What we are doing from this assessment and the recommended fixes are to preserve the life of the bridge. So I want to make that clear before somebody sees that image and says, I shouldn't be going over that bridge. No, it's, it's in, it's fine. It's, these things here are just things that will help preserve the life of it. So the retaining walls, they help keep in the sediment to, um, keep the, the bridge in place. So you can see here, there's water that gets in between the abutment and it flows down and causes erosion there. Um, and then you can see where it really happens, has big problems is with the ice, and it causes things to expand. Uh, this is, I don't know why they call it the Murray Turbo Tunnel, but, um, there's some issues there. Those are called out in the later years. Anyway, those are the pictures I had. I, I can maybe explain some of this more, um, if there's any questions on it, but for the most part, I, you'll, you'll see some of these items. Some of these items can be fixed probably in this current fiscal year, well, 18, 18 pretty. Um, I would say that we could do the abutment seals, uh, this year. The big, the retaining wall, uh, the $79,000, that would probably be a CIP item for next year.
You're gonna do all the abutments this year?
Uh, I, I have a feeling that that's what we're gonna be working on, so. Uh, our staff might be able to do this. Um, I feel fairly confident in them, being able to replace it. In the, in the assessment, there's some design on how to go in there and cut down and replace a seal, so. I think our staff could probably do it. If not, um, I would definitely see these things being done, so.
So you're looking at a project in next year CIP to hopefully do next spring, summer?
Yes. I would, I would say that we would look at doing the retaining wall G next summer. And then try and strategically place the fixes of the other retaining walls, um, in the later years.
Is there value to doing it all at once?
There probably is. Some mobility costs from a contractor's perspective.
You should take a look at that. I mean, the, the funding source that you'd be using probably is gonna be out of road use tax, which sits with 1.9 million in it right now. And we will use a portion of it, but we've got a balance in there that we can look at, so. Keep it in mind.
Yep. These are just things that'll help, you know, preserve the life of it yet again, so.
You're supposed to be doing this, Nick. That's why we hired you.
Anything else?
Thank you, my friend. Uh, next, number three, update on codes for care facilities?
This is kind of an update, uh, I guess, on care facilities, family homes. Uh, staff has been looking into these codes, uh, into codes recently regarding residential care facilities. Uh, these homes have become more frequent in the past couple of years with changes in state law, uh, regarding, uh, mental health care and family homes, um, and changes in those. So they're not something that we've had much issue with in the past, or were fully aware of previously. Uh, but based on the growing number of these homes, and we've had a couple of recent fires on, on North Seventh and Loi, or North Ninth and Loisa Street, kind of brought it to our attention a little more so as well. Uh, we've been looking at our codes to further determine if these homes are properly following the currently adopted codes, uh, or if we need to make some corrections in how we're enforcing our codes. So a couple, uh, different codes these fall under. Uh, one is the zoning code. Under the state code, uh, chapter 4 and 4, that regulates zoning, uh, we cannot, uh, require any additional permits for family homes that are registered with the state under, uh, chapter 135C. Uh, so if they're registered with the state, they're allowed to go in any residential zoning district, uh, provided they are registered with the state. If they're not registered with the state, under our current zoning code, it requires a special use permit for transitional or assisted living facilities that these family homes would fall under. That goes to the zoning board, uh, for, uh, consideration of approval, uh, provided they're, and they're in R1, two, or three zones. Uh, the second component is the building code, uh, that's adopted by the city. Uh, it's the international code adopted by the state as well. Uh, that classifies care facilities within a dwelling as an R3 occupancy. Uh, that's an occupancy standard. It's not zoning, uh, which kind of gets a little confusing. But, um, basically for R3, uh, care facilities, just up on the overhead here. Stephanie, if you want to switch over to this, uh, it's listed in, uh, this memo as well, but makes it, uh, pretty clear what, a great care facility within a dwelling, which is, has five or fewer persons receiving care that are within a single-family dwelling, are permitted to comply with the International Residential Code, provided an automatic sprinkler system is installed in accordance with, uh, 903.3.1.3 of the International Residential Code. So, uh, essentially, these care facilities that are in a dwelling, uh, that have five or fewer individuals do require a sprinkler system. We did reach out to some other communities, uh, put it out on the mailing list of the international building officials in Iowa, and received back, uh, quite a few comments, um, council Bluffs, Ankeny, Iowa City, Sergeant Bluff, Mount Pleasant, Sioux City, Urbendale, Muscatine, so big and small communities, and they all concurred, uh, the, their interpretation of the state code and, uh, what was described, how we, uh, these are care facilities in homes that they do require, uh, sprinklers. Um, and also, uh, did, uh, get comment from, uh, one of the building officials in Ankeny that had some discussion with the state that they would require sprinklers as well if they're licensed with the state. So, um, this is kind of just an update to counsel. It is something that we haven't dealt with as much in the past, but, uh, do have quite a few in Burlington, seem to be a growing number as well.
I would imagine.
Um, but based on our examination of our codes, contact with other communities, and looking at state codes, um, they would be required to have a sprinkler system, get a special use permit if they're not registered with the state. And these aren't new codes for Burlington. This is just enforcing our codes that we have on the book, but, uh, becoming more aware at a staff level what those codes were. at a staff level what those codes were. So our goal going forward would be to notify the properties that we're aware of. Some of the companies, there's a range of different companies that operate these care facilities in the community, request that they, if they're not registered with the state or licensed with the state, that they apply for a special use permit within 90 days. And then within, upon approval of the special use permit, that they would be required to install the sprinkler system within one year of approval of that. Again, just an update to council, kind of what our review and contact with other communities are. It is an easy issue, I'm sure, for some people. There have been a lot of changes in the state laws and how mental health and family homes are regulated, and it's something that's just become more prevalent and we've become aware of and want to make sure we're making homes safe and enforcing our codes appropriately, so...
I know the inspector general doesn't have any problems with that one.
One item that did come up, I guess, as well is, I think there's an article in the newspaper a while ago, but there's a home in Washington, Iowa, where an individual is killed in one of these facilities, and that sparked a lot of kind of reexamination of codes as well. So we want to make sure we're making a safe community from a code standpoint.
But this will put some, you have some agencies that already have these facilities up without sprinklers, so making this kind of a change is, there will be some hard, it does lead to some changes for them too, some increased cost to try to do business the way they are. But again, as your department has taken a look at this, and really, I kind of pushed a little bit too, just the concerns with, from a safety perspective, are we making sure that we're doing things appropriately? It seems like this is what we should be doing.
I agree. You guys good?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's, I agree it's the right thing to do, but I would strongly encourage you to get ahold of these companies right away and let them know what we're finding and, I mean, Optumay and other companies like them. Because this is, this could be huge expenses for them and they're, I know some of them are struggling right now. One of the companies has cut the salaries of the employees because of the operating costs that they're experiencing and the payback that they're getting from the different government agencies is just not theirs. The more notice they have, the better their chances of finding the funding to get this done or working with the property owners they're running from.
We good?
Thank you, Eric.
Number four, treating dust from gravel surfaces as a nuisance. Mr. Tissler?
Actually, I don't know if this staff has as good of a way of framing this as, this came as a request from a, well, through the council from a citizen on a specific property, but it relates, you start trying to figure out how you deal with a given specific incident, so you have to figure out how does this fit within an overall context of a community. And I think that, Tim, you had brought this up, and I think the last email that you sent out had a good summary, if you wanted to kind of present that and what you're looking at and the concerns that were raised.
Well, the citizen was looking for answers and the dust was, the dust was the last answer that he was looking for, how to handle it. But he was trying to find out whether it was classified as a nuisance, and in our code it's not classified. It's not identified as a nuisance. It very well could be a nuisance, but it's not identified as a nuisance. The, and I'm forgetting what exactly I had in the last email because I had, there were so many of them, but one of the...
Do you want to?
You got it?
Yeah.
I'm gonna read it to you because we can go from there. Please do not think that I'm proposing that we start issuing nuisance citations for dust or that I support silcoating all gravelled surfaces. I simply want to have a discussion on the issue. I want to show the citizen I am being responsive to his questions. If we decide we can do nothing, then we need to say so instead of beating around the bush. If you go to the beginning of this email exchange, you'll see that I have not indicated that I thought that dust should be treated as a nuisance, that we should silcoat all the alleys. I have suggested that, and I do support that if, let's see, I do support that. I did ask if it was considered nuisance, and I just asked the question that was being asked of me, and I did not have an answer to. I did state that we could do, that we could be helpful if the neighbors, neighborhood wished to take the problem on themselves, that we could consider providing engineering services and planning that would coincide with other work the city was having done. That has been done successfully in the past. This is not an option that I can call Mr. Albright and tell him that it's not. My concern was that Mr. Albright has been contacting the city since Bruce Schlegel was city manager, and he's never been given a direct answer or a, as to whether anything can be done, and he's never been giving an answer to what can be done, if anything can be done. And that's what I was searching out for him, is can anything be done? With the discussions or the emails that I've had back and forth with the city manager and Charlie Nichols and Eric, there's nothing in the code to provide for this. So now it becomes a political thing for the council to address. My perspective on it is, I don't think we have the money that we can silcoat all the alleys and all the gravel surfaces in town, and I don't know that we can cite someone for a nuisance when we're not willing to take care of that same dust issue ourselves. So how do we, how do we better serve the citizen that's having the issue? And again, I go back to if the citizen wants, if the citizens in a particular neighborhood wants to take on the issue, at the very least that we could do is provide engineering services and planning so that when we do have dust control services, services going on in the area, or we do have silcoat going on in the area, that we can work with the contractor to get that particular area taken care of at the same time. Am I making sense?
Yes.
Jim, what do you think of this? So in the given situation, that's a private alley. It's not city alley anymore. I guess we sold that back in 1969 or something like that.
Vacated in '69. We're still looking to see if it's actually been sold or if it's still owned by the city. It has been vacated, so it's not a public alley, but finding the records on whether...
It was actually transferred over and on. If, from a private perspective, you have to treat it as a nuisance, could they, could we, if they wanted to work with us to tag off of a project, on a private situation, that gets a little bit iffy to try to tag off, although they're certainly welcome to work with a contractor that we have to do something. Public alleys, the concern that I would have, if you, I think it makes sense for us if we have a group of property owners that want to have their alley paved and tag off one of our projects to let them do that. And we've done that on some, we have a process that I haven't been involved with, but has been in place, if you wanted, for places that want to widen their roads, if they're willing to pick up the tab, we've allowed that to happen in the past.
Yeah, we've allowed, we've allowed that. And then also, we've had people that want, or neighborhoods that want to upgrade their streets from silcoat to hard surface concrete or asphalt.
But going through that, you have to have everyone involved in the process.
Right.
So that, that certainly can be done, but if you have an alley with eight, eight properties off of it, eight property owners, you're gonna have eight folks who have to come together or be willing to do the assessment off of it for those who aren't willing to participate.
And we've done that. We've done those too.
Yeah, and those are, those are all fine options to do. It's just that's kind of the mechanism that you'd have to go through to do it.
And to tag off of that, your point is, what you made was, actually the note I wrote to myself, if we declare dust as a nuisance, then every one of our gravelled alleys becomes a nuisance. For instance, in my alley, you have the eight property owners, but half of them never use the alley because there's no reason for them to be in the alley. So why would they be willing to pay to seal coat an alley when they never use it? So there's the issue, an issue that I see.
The issue on the gravel alley is not the smoothness, but the dust that's created. And that would affect everybody, so...
So are you willing to pay for a little dust control?
Right. But it would be up to a neighbor, it would be up to a neighborhood to agree.
Somebody had to sell it. In other words, yeah. So I don't see that we have a place to do anything.
From a staff perspective, with the, with the specific issue that came up, we didn't have a recommendation to, I mean, the, the options that we could see were, included some wholesale, to treat a given scenario, you're asking us to do it to everywhere. And that becomes a level of cost that we can't afford. In fact, even from the idea of dust control, we don't, we have some gravel roads on the edge of town that we do dust control, but we don't really have any projects where we do it on in-town.
I can give you kind of an idea on cost. We actually piggyback off the county. They're the ones that handle the contract with the dust control. To give you an understanding of what that means for an alleyway, I had Chris work up the figures on kind of just an average alleyway on, you know, they run 12-foot wide, where most of our alleys are anywhere from, you know, 12, 18-foot wide, about $300 per alley. I also figured it up in a different way, per linear foot, it's about 63 cents. We have 167 lane miles of roads in town. If you would use a third of that number and say we have that much in alleyways, that becomes 55 miles worth of alleyways. That potentially becomes an option for dust control. And then you're in the, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to do dust control or that liability to do that.
And how many times a year?
Usually typically they do it twice a year. They do it earlier after, after the, kind of the rain subsided in May, and then they do it later in August.
It's not something that we recommend doing, just from the perspective of, is there a benefit to it? Yes, there is. But trying to weigh out where's the benefit of this versus other costs that we have, other projects that we're not getting to, where's the relative value? And unfortunately, we can't make all of the, make every project work.
And again, I'm not interested in spending taxpayers' dollars all over the community, but if a neighborhood wants to have that done, we can arrange that for them, no? If it's done at the same time, then all the rest of them are done. Can we work with the county to get that?
Since the contract's with the county, I would say that we...
I think that they would have to try to, if, when we know that, what, who the contractor is, they could see if they could piggyback off while they're in town and do it. I don't know whether we want to get into doing a bid spec off of alleys.
That becomes pretty tedious work to try and get in there to, there's a lot of mobility costs in there that aren't seen either from moving from one site to another with some of the...
And there's also a big difference for contractor doing out, or doing the gravel roads versus coming into the community and having to do alleys.
Correct.
I don't know how many, you may have some contractors who are very willing to do it and others who wouldn't have an interest in being involved in that. From the perspective of the time involved to do individual alleys, for our staff to help with that, even look at the projects we have on board right now, Agency Street East, we are, did we do the contract with the N.K. last meeting?
It was approved.
We would prefer to do that in-house. We don't have the time to get to it. Our staff has, is talking with Ryan when he was down doing the...
Shooting the heights.
Shooting the heights on Jefferson Street.
Oh, yeah.
He has eight projects that he's got sitting waiting to try to finish off that are all just sort of sitting there, and he's trying to get at least one of them off of the book so he can get to the others. We're not getting to what we need to get done. So technically, can we have our staff do it? Yeah, but then we're pushing off other work that we're gonna have to have contracted out to an outside engineering firm. So that's, that's a priority that we're not willing to make. If you want, as a council, to make that, we can change that, but from our perspective, that's not where we want to be.
I would feel like something would have to give, though.
No, don't, don't do it.
I, I wouldn't use engineering staff, in all honesty. I probably would use Chris because he handles this contract anyway rather than get into engineering. That being said, to do one alleyway, you maybe have 20 property owners on that alleyway. I mean, if one comes in and wants to do it behind their alleyway, now you, you start the conversation with all 20 property owners adjacent to that alley. You know, is there a petition process that would have to be started by at least a certain number of the people in that alley to even, to get that process going? I would think we would want to set that up at the very beginning rather than...
That's what, that's the way it was done in the past. Eighty percent of the neighborhood signed a petition, say they, that they wanted it, then we proceeded with it.
And I would say that dust control would probably not be done through a special assessment. It would have to be an upfront cost.
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be billed out to them. I know that the county bills out through, for their dust control, so if a property owner in the county wants it done, the property owner pays for it. It pays, it goes on their taxes, I guess. I guess we probably could do that, but...
And even as you get into that, the property owner in question here in the alley that he's talking about aren't, he doesn't live on that alley. And so now you're talking about trying to get cooperation from other property owners that aren't, I mean, are also impacted.
If there's an option out there that he can advise them about, then he's got someplace to start talking. If he gets, if he goes nowhere with it, he goes nowhere with it. I'm just looking for options. If there is, if there is no options in the, in, and we don't want to be...
I just don't want to get too much in the weeds with it. I just don't think it's probably the best use of my staff's time. I think there's other things that needs to be done, unless that direction is given otherwise.
Well, it's not, it's not limited to dust control. I was also talking about silcoating and, or any other, any other option. I mean...
I do have a concern with, with, with silcoating and/or paving alleys. We have a hard enough time in this town keeping our roads open, and yes, that road will probably, the alleyway doesn't have as much traffic load, but in 15, 20 years, now that alley is now a burden on the city to fix. It's a lot easier to maintain a gravel alleyway than it is a concrete alley or even a seal coat alley. And I think if the special assessment's done on the front end from the property owners, that it is ours to take care of after that. And I think it just becomes more, more burden for the city.
We've not taken that approach in the past, and it's, and I've got a concrete alley behind my house, and it's not been, it's been, it was put in when the, when the development was done, so. And it's still the city's, the city's attitude has been on it that those are private drives, and even though they're city right-of-ways and they're alleyways, but they're private drives, so the neighborhoods have to take care of them. I mean, they don't come out and patch the alleys. We, we patch it ourselves. And I know a lot of alleys like that. I don't think any of those that we've done in the past, and we've done at least three that we upgraded from gravel to concrete, that we've, that cities take ownership of that.
Do we maintain snow and stuff on it?
No.
And I guess what you're talking, and then you have other alleys like ours that is a concrete one that has the heaves and no one's doing anything to maintain it, and you had, but that is our responsibility, and yet we don't do anything with it.
I mean, you look at our downtown alleys.
The spots where we're able to do it is where it is still, and what Nick is, I guess, getting at is, a gravel alley is, can make a smoother surface, even though you get potholes and then you have to go in and take care of them, you can keep a long-term smoother surface easier at a cheaper price.
A lot cheaper price.
With it that way than with an alley such as ours. And, I mean, you have people who are taking care of yours. We don't have anyone who's doing it with ours. But, I mean, that's gonna be different all over town.
Every neighborhood's gonna be different. Okay.
But it's still a question, how does the council want to proceed? Is it something that is an issue for one person, or is it an issue for all of you, or...
No, it's not for me.
It's not for me.
No.
And that being said, I, the speed limit in alleyways is 10 miles an hour. I don't know how much dust you can generate in alleys going 10 miles an hour, but that is the speed limit.
I can tell you from personal experience.
The only other thing I'd have to say about that alley, it's being used by... The only other thing I'd have to say about that alley, it's being used by a business on a much greater basis than what most of the streets are being used in that neighborhood and we don't, we're not requiring anything more than them maintaining gravel. There, there is concrete parking for those that are using the gravel and part of it, much of that alley fronts on, on residential properties, but majority of it is held by, by Hope Haven and, and there's, the traffic is probably heavier on that alley than on any other street in that, short of Lennox, than any other street in that entire neighborhood. That being said, that's all I got to say about it. I'll let Bill Albright know that the council staff's not interested in taking care of his issue.
Right.
At least he's got an answer now after 10 years.
Yes.
Anybody got any problems with appointments?
Nope.
All right. We're going to close out. Mr. Tinsel?
I did get a request for a subordination agreement. We did one before for one of our owner occupied loan programs or refinancing. If they get the information, I'd like to put that on the agenda just so that they can refinance their, their mortgage when they had some home improvements done, but waiting for, we did one about two months ago for someone as well.
I remember that.
So you got it?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. Antoinette?
Nothing.
Nothing? Wow, surprised.
I know, right?
Disappointed. Mr. Scott?
No, wait, I do.
I knew you wouldn't let me down, come on.
So, the film festival, right? That was pretty awesome. Not a, not a lot of people go, though. I kept getting asked if I was a filmmaker and, no, I just like to watch movies.
You look like you could be one of those ilk.
Yes, so I think, I think more people need to know about it. They got to come out and see it. It's a fun time. If anybody watches movies, like, does anybody here not watch movies?
Not very many.
Never?
Well, no, I used to.
Never ever?
I used to watch a movie a long time.
Okay, then you're excused. Everyone else is not excused. Shame, shame. You were there.
I was there.
I was there for three days.
I was there, I was there Saturday night.
What's, what's the average length of each film?
It goes from two minutes to, I think the longest one was 25, 30 minutes.
I love their 40 minute films.
And it's a wide variety, comedy, foreign, drama.
Hundreds of films.
You were there all three days?
115.
You're special.
Thanks. That's it.
Tim Scott?
My daughter, my oldest daughter, the jock, ran 27 miles today and it's her first, first leg of her 180 mile trip. She, she started at 6:30 this morning, got done at 2 o'clock this afternoon. She was disappointed, she couldn't get it to 30 miles. She wanted to do 30 miles her first day, but she said her feet just wouldn't let her go. Heart was there, but her feet wasn't.
She's doing this over a week?
Over, yeah, this week.
So between the two of you, you can say you averaged 13 and a half miles today?
No, she done 26 miles today. I done five.
He was trying to give you an opening there.
Wait a minute, let me see. I done 7.24.
Good going.
I want to thank the group that came down to City Hall. We did a, we had another tour down here of some future leaders of our community and I just want to thank Jim. Every time I, every time I do a tour, I try not to harass too many people, but I always go to the city manager's office and torture him for a while, so I did want to thank him for being a good sport and always, when I bring in the groups, that's your, I could count on you, so, thanks for that. Some guy said the city manager was cool. Tell him I said that, so I'm praying for that guy. He's really got problems, so.
He's got some problems.
Mayor Pro Temp?
No, thanks.
No, thanks.
City manager?
Anyone willing to switch radio first to second week?
Where?
Next week?
Next week? Let me look.
Let's see, Wednesday?
It's our family vacation next week.
July 5.
Yeah, you'll be able to see. Bob?
Yes.
You're good?
Yep.
We've got the bishop.
Sure.
Okay.
What time again?
Nine.
It's nine.
Nick Mack?
Next Wednesday.
July 5.
July 5.
He's here now. You will start to see flood wall operations, the build, the building of it, start this week. Some security fencing will go up and then the, the trailers that they have will be going into the south parking lot. So there will be some signs going up for vacating of parking. The two easternmost, or the easternmost lane on the, between the auditorium and port will be asked to vacate and I'm not sure of the amount in the south parking lot, but there will be signage going up this week, so expect to see that.
All right.
And then demolition will start and then it'll be in operation, so keep that in mind.
They don't have a requirement high the river, has to be in our work, do they?
For some of the demolition work, they don't. I think they do when they start dropping H piles in, if it hits 15 foot, they, they stop. So there's some stuff that will, there's some operations that'll require less than, around, less than 10 foot, so I know that.
We're headed there.
I haven't, I haven't had that since I've been here, so.
We're headed there.
Hopefully we, we don't have any more of that high river stuff, so.
Okay.
That's up to that's going on.
You know, I do the switch, I, I'm not even in town on the 12th, so. If you want to do your regular week, you can, I'll have someone else come in on the 5th. If you want to stay on this, this next week, that's fine too, but I'll have to have the staff do the other one. Just stay where you're at.
So stay where, stay with the word this time?
Wait, wait, wait a minute.
So, so stay where we're at, where?
Stay on the 5th.
Stay on the 5th, you guys.
Yeah, you said it.
Yeah.
If anyone's interested in doing the League's annual conference, it is in Davenport this year, September 27th to 27th, 29th. I think you already have a postcard on this, but if you're going to get registered, we need to get you registered. The sooner we do, the easier it is to get rooms for you. They, they hold, have a block that they set aside and it's on a first come, first served and people end up holding them and...
All right.
Where is it at?
Davenport.
Oh. I'm good.
Okay.
I can't believe you just said that.
Typewriter, typewriter shop. The, that building has gotten to where the roof was done over the last couple of weeks. They had to do an awful lot of repairs to the trusses underneath it, more than what they had anticipated on the front side. But they, we did the walkthrough last week. Is that true, Eric?
Yep.
And it, it passed inspection, which means that that will be, one of the things that we did, we set aside $25,000 that they had to put up until they got the roof done. Now that it's certified, we'll be processing a check to reimburse on that $25,000 that they put on hold. That'll, I think, be in this next claims list, if not, I'm just not sure if they're on that, so you'll, you'll end up seeing that.
Do you know what they're planning to do with that building?
That building, they are getting it listed through Terrace Realty. I think in the 210, 220?
Yeah.
220,000 range, something like that.
219.
What?
I think 219.
219.
You were close.
That's close. So it's, it has gone on the market. They still do have some, like, they're going to be doing a, an organized clean out of the second and third floors, I think, July 8th, that's Saturday morning, to get it to where it looks a little bit better. I know they've had people who've already gone through the facility and they, they have had some interest. I don't know where, where that will get sold or what price, but that is a price point where they can be in a point where they're made whole in terms of the money that they had invested in it, given that they had quite a bit of grant funding to help along the way. So that, that looks to be, we'll see how that all proceeds, but they're in a position that they wanted to be and, and at least to be in a point where they can say that they have a, a good potential to get it marketed at a price that keeps them whole.
Where is the Tame building that they keep working?
It's over there.
That's the only money you'll have all year, that's it. This whole bag of tricks right there.
October.
Yeah.
What are they, they keep working on?
Mid to late October.
Are they getting close to the end or?
No.
They have, they've moved...
Mid to late October.
They have moved the date several times. I don't know whether the, they'll be able to hit that mid to late October or not.
Probably not.
Annie has a little bit of vested interest in this whole process, so she's kept up on it.
Which is why I keep asking about all these other properties.
Okay.
I want my own place.
No, but it is proceeding and they have done some neat things in that facility. I don't know if you've been involved in any of the tours, but it's, they're doing some neat work in there.
Any issues with the typewriter building? It's all Steve Frevert's fault. Don't tell him, anybody.
That was all I had.
Before this gets out of control.